United States of America and to the Republican Party.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for being both video and audio tape. And if anybody else in the audience is doing so, please inform me. Thanks very much. Meeting minutes, Mr. Gagnon.
We move the minutes for December 29, 2015.
One second. One second. All business. Mr. Gagnon, do you have any old business?
I do not.
And I do not either. It's true. Comments and concerns? Anybody? Yes, sir.
Just to follow up on last week, those eight items involved with the canine dog.
Yeah, I didn't do this. What can I tell you?
Take your paperwork. When can I expect it?
Next week.
Mr. Derry, can you hear that?
I did, sir. Yes. I made a note. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Gagnon.
I have five items.
Five?
Five items.
Okay. That's one minute.
The Finance Committee is going into their budgetary review season. Are you planning on a level funded budget for 2017? Do we need to have some kind of a guideline as to how you want to proceed with those budgets?
I think you'll need a guideline, but we haven't, the board hasn't discussed it as yet. We have a couple of meetings coming up in the next week or so. So we'll provide you with something.
Normally, the selectmen tell us, you know, how you want us to go.
We'll announce it, but you know, I spoke to Loretta today on a phone call regarding wage classification, minimum wage. So I'm just trying to, and I spoke to our town accountant about who's on the wage classification and changes for FY '17 because we had that change this year. We have another one, so I want to make sure the department knows.
Are we definitely going to go forward with the secondary one for 2017?
The $11 an hour on January 1st?
No, no, no. The change in the percentages in the wage classifications. We had raises this while we had a change.
Right. We voted them in, we voted them in in May, so we went, we adopted the $10 an hour change for January 1st. So we eliminated some steps and added some steps.
Right.
So we're going to have to do the same thing next year to meet the $11 request. It's not a mandate for municipal offices, but we decided, we agreed at the town meeting that we would move forward with that, the minimum wage requirement. So it's going to impact everybody's budget. So I wanted to see what the Town and Council Act, you know, I want to see where we're going to have, will we, we look to eliminate a few steps and add a few steps, how that's going to impact the salary structure, so we can figure out by this year.
We did that study last year for the sake of the town meeting floor. So we had a column with the change and then we had a column without the change. Do you want us to do that, prepare that again this year?
I would do it with the change. Yes, definitely. Yeah, definitely. I, I know what you're talking about now, Barry, yes.
Because I, we have a spreadsheet now that it'll flow. So if I change the steps, it will flow automatically so that the departments actually will have it.
That's a great idea.
Our budget goal for this year is to have all budgets reviewed by the 15th of March. We have, we are Thursday assigning liaisons to all departments from the Finance Committee to help implement that this year. So we're, that's our goal. We feel that the only department really, unless you know of any other, would be the school that might need more time than that.
Well, they have to vote on their budget on the 21st of March.
I understand that. So we're trying, we're saying the 15th, they're the 21st.
They're, I would say plan on them being the 21st. They're not convening sooner than that.
That's the only one we think that's going to be.
I think it's a realistic request.
Yeah. I want to bring to your attention, I was approached by two people in town and an employee in the building of a conflict for Dave Delansky being on FinCom. After talking with the Association of Finance Committees and reviewing the town bylaw and the state bylaw, I'm convinced that there is no conflict to be, that I'm aware of. I had that conversation twice with the Association President, Chairman, and he said, as far as the state is concerned, there is no conflict at all. It would only lie within our own bylaws in the town.
There's nothing there.
And there's nothing there.
Right.
So Dave is fine.
Okay.
Okay. Ed Lonergan emailed me, he's been approached by the library to be on their board, and he is a member of the FinCom.
Okay.
That is a little different story. But he can go to the clerk and go on record as having, being on that committee. So at any time that we're making any kind of decisions regarding them, he'll recuse himself and he's on record for that.
Okay.
I've been approached by the Assessors Department. They have a reserve account transfer that they're going to be requesting. Prelimarily, I went over with Mary, Mary Jane, Mary Lou.
Mary Lou.
Sorry. And I don't have a problem with it. I wanted to know if you had reviewed that with them or no one.
I mean, I'm aware of the, I don't have the exact amount. Do you have that amount on your mind? Do you know the amount?
It was $2100 or $2200. It was, you know, it was in response to crashing computers. So we felt, I mean, I feel we'll have to discuss it Thursday with the board, but in this case, it is an emergency expenditure.
Is it coming in this Thursday?
That's this Thursday.
You're posted this Thursday?
Yes, and it's posted for, they're going to be, they're posted for 7:30.
Okay. Can I ask you, how many members do you have now?
We have seven.
Great. Excellent. About time.
We have six, yeah. We have six sworn and we have the seventh. I don't know if he's been sworn yet. It was supposed to happen this week. I haven't been to see Nancy.
If you get a chance, either yourself or one of your members, it'd be great if you could attend the school committee, something, I think they have a meeting next Monday evening, I think.
We actually have three liaisons for school committee and for the subcommittee, the Budget Subcommittee. So we'll, I went tonight, so.
Rest presentation is on their website too, the PowerPoint, which was, I went last weekend in the last day, it was pretty informative.
That's all I have.
Great. Glad to see you have members, finally. That's wonderful to hear. Anybody else? No? Okay. Who responds? Mr. Gagnon.
Chairman of the office received an email from ACO Sarah Prado requesting to speak to the board regarding the Assistant ACO position.
Do you want to bring her in, Mr. Gagnon, next week? Here we go. Have her come in next week?
Yeah.
We have a meeting.
The office received official notice from the Attorney General's Office that both Chairman Nardi and Selectman Gagnon violated the open meeting law during a phone call on the morning of September 3rd, 2015. The board has been ordered immediate and future compliance with the OML and this matter is now considered closed.
So I did touch on it briefly last week, but yes, I did violate the open meeting law by not posting immediate meeting. So that did come in from the Attorney General's Office. Anybody else from last year that you want to add or?
You didn't post or what? I'm sorry, I didn't.
I called an emergency meeting. Mr. Lavash wasn't available. I was sitting by his chair for time. I called an emergency meeting regarding highway vehicles, but I didn't post. I spoke to Jim, Mr. Gagnon, on the telephone. Even though I did that, you still have to post. You can post an emergency, but I didn't post. That was the main part of the violation and we should have met, not spoken. So I read it, I understand it. And we'll hear that.
Meeting be held on Thursday, January 14th at 6:30 PM at the Ware High School Library in order to discuss the proposed consolidation of Bay State Mary Lane Hospital in Ware and Bay State Wing Hospital in Palmer under one license. Notice has been provided to both the fire and police departments for their review. RSVP is required.
So just to comment on that, I read the memo today. I did speak to Loretta about that and Loretta, you mentioned that you contacted Adam and Bruce regarding that. So Mary Lane, you know, Bay State owns both, Mary Lane and Wing. They're going to be consolidating. I think what I read is about 25 to 30 people potentially being laid off from Mary Lane. So Ware is going to have this meeting to discuss this with their board members to see what the future holds for that. So they asked one of our members, potentially for two or three of our members, if we, somebody could attend. So I'm not sure of my availability for this anybody wants to attend that evening. We do have the RSVP. So I think one of our members could probably, I have to just check my calendar on that.
Do you want to do it?
It's on the 14th, right? 6:30.
January 14th, which is a Thursday at 6:30 PM.
Next Thursday, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I could possibly do it. I'm just, I got to check my calendar.
I could possibly do it, but I think the 14th is running on my head or something.
If you can, I can go with you.
We have a meeting at three. Next Thursday, we have a meeting at three, so.
We'll figure it out, but I think one of our members will, I'll see what's going on in Ware with Mary Lane.
Excuse me, what time is that meeting?
6:30 at the Ware High School.
And does that consolidation affect us financially?
Affect us financially?
Is there more, is there more calls for the fire?
You know, this is a very unfortunate situation as far as I'm concerned. I think I'd probably speak for a lot of the, you know, fire chiefs in the community and or police chiefs personally, you know, most of our transports go to Mary Lane and I think that the, from what I gather, the ultimate decision, whether it takes two years or one year, is that they want to shut down the entire facility. So to me, that's a shame to lose that community hospital and the service they provide. I'd much rather transport patients to Mary Lane than, than other local hospitals. Our experiences with Mary Lane have been, have been great. I, you know, I, I don't want to talk badly about other hospitals and I won't, but I, it would be a shame to lose that, that service. So, you know, if they do call for, for any kind of letters from communities or whatnot or support to keep it open at any point, I would hope that that might be something that the selectmen might want to look at. But certainly going to attend meetings, I actually have a meeting tomorrow at Mary Lane with Emergency Department Directors and EMS Directors and that will be one of the topics of where they're planning on going with the transition. But, you know, from what I understand of it at this point, and it's very preliminary at the moment, you know, this could, you know, severely impact the local departments that could no longer transport there.
So I guess, would that mean that if you, would you then necessarily need to go to Southbridge more because Mary Lane?
We would absolutely be having longer transport times. We would be required to either transport our majority of our patients to either Wing Hospital in Palmer or, or even further over to Harrington and, you know, and not, not only that, but our medical control license and everything is out of Mary Lane, which makes it very easy for us to exchange medications and everything like that. So it certainly would have a dramatic impact on the service and, you know, I feel that it's, it will have a very dramatic impact on, on what the residents will receive for care, to be honest. Come on.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. There's a copy of the memo issued by Bay State Health with regards to some of the details they're, you know, they're proposing. I think one of the biggest ones is that they're considering shutting down the inpatient portion of the hospital.
Well, right now, if you, if I may, right now, the main, the first phase of this is to shut down the inpatient services at Mary Lane, which would mean that, you know, necessarily taking some patients there, you know, you know, I think this is the first step in the process of shutting down the ER, in my opinion. And I say that only because, you know, if they can't keep the people there that need to stay, then they're going to have to ship them out. And if they start losing that revenue and everything and, you know, then that could be a serious problem. So, you know, I'm very concerned about it. I don't know a whole lot about it because there hasn't been too many meetings on it as of yet, but, you know, it does certainly concern me, you know, and others that I've spoken to, that we could be losing a, a community hospital or at least a decent amount of services from a community hospital that, that the majority of our patients rely on.
Okay. So one of us won't be able to attend next Thursday. We'll figure it out. Looks nice.
Anyone wishing to dispose of their Christmas tree may do so at the Highway Barn located at 87 Brimfield Road. That's during business hours? Does not say.
I would assume so, yes.
Don't drop them off in front.
I'll go after 3 o'clock.
Exactly. The office received the monthly report for December 2015 for emergency management slash cert.
Let's see that.
And lastly, the office received official notice from the Attorney General's Office that Selectman Lavash's open meeting law complaint was beyond the appropriate timeframe and the matter is considered closed.
All right. Agenda items, 7:15. We have the discussion regarding the on-call roster salary in regards to the Call Chaplain. Chief Lavoy is here for an expected vote and discussion. So I think we'll turn it over to you, Adam, first with the request.
Last time I was here, I provided the selectmen with a, with a call salaries breakdown with the addition of the Chaplain's position. Apparently, there's been some issues that have come up related to that. So I, you know, was asked to come in tonight to discuss those, those issues. So I'd be more than happy to have a conversation about that. You know, again, I, I just simply say that this is not a full-time or a part-time position. This is something that is a benefit to the firefighters, a benefit to the community that, you know, in their time of need, if necessary, and it's not costing the town anything additional.
So the position's great. It is there. It's just a matter of how we're going to fund this position now, the remainder of this year and understanding what we need to do for next year to, to document it and label it as such. So it's, it's in the schedule. So in the schedule here, Adam, I, you know, looking at this, how often a year do you actually allocate the funding sources for these people? Is it at the end of the year? Is it quarterly?
It's one, one time a year. It's at the end of the fiscal year, the very, very end to beginning of the next fiscal year. Usually, it's submitted a week prior to the end and the, all of the department staff get the check within the first week of the new fiscal year.
Okay. So, and recently, you changed, you modified your call schedule and you added Chaplain there, correct?
That's correct.
The original call schedule that was, that position wasn't in there as it may have last year. I understand that. But now that he's there, you added him into this roster. So I guess my question is, if it's paid out at the end of the year and if it's not labeled as such in this call schedule breakdown that he's there, could, could we potentially sponsor an article in the special to fund the position?
I don't think that's at all necessary because the call salaries breakdown was something that was first developed by Chief Dolan prior to me. It is within the job description of a strong chief to do that. It sets the call, you know, call salaries for all department employees. I don't believe it is an issue. It's something that was done between the board and the fire chief, not the town. It was, you know, the, the strong chief law clearly says that they set the salaries for, for call members and they, they assign call, call members as needed and as necessary. So I don't believe this is an issue that should come up. I don't believe it's an issue that should have gone, you know, that should have to go before the town. And quite frankly, Town Council ruled in on this subject and they said that that was absolutely appropriate. So I don't understand where the pushback is coming from.
Well, pushback, I know, I fully intend to compensate the person. I just want to make sure we're doing it the right way. We're not violating any raw, any laws out there. So in, in reading an email we received from Tim Zes and Town Council, at the end of this email, he writes, "The compensation plan and the rates therein have been applied to call firefighters." Then I would recommend that the town meeting vote to amend the compensation plan to include the wage rate for the new Chaplain's position. So in reading this, his recommendation is that we need to have that worded in here to fund that.
Well, I guess the problem I'm having with this whole thing is, quite honestly, is that, is that I've never seen that email and I've never been approached by anybody with regard to the issue that we're talking about here. So number one, I find that inappropriate. I have never had anyone contact me or, or come to me to add any issue or discuss the issue with me. You know, I, this has all been secondhand, behind the scenes stuff, back and forth. The emails that I have from Town Council, absolutely. This precedent has been set by hundreds of towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. There are hundreds of towns that have a Call Chaplain that are, that are assigned and appointed by the Fire Chief. I just got off the phone, the phone today with the head of the, the Fire Chaplains Corps who have, you know, that they, they need a recommendation and a letter from the Fire Chief when one's appointed to accept them into their, their corps. I mean, this has been done with hundreds of communities. This is, Warren is not unique to this. And this is, you know, something that the fire chiefs are doing all over the place because it has, it has been so recognized that, that not only physical, but emotional and, and mental health is, is a huge part of, of the fire service nowadays. And I, unfortunately, I've had, you know, had a lot of, and I'm not going to get into it, but I've had a lot of negative feedback come back to me and things that I've been told that things were said, you know, here in this building and, and, you know, I just think it's inappropriate. And, and quite frankly, it is, there's no violation from what Town Council is showing, is telling me and, and what the authority of a strong chief is to appoint this position. So I, you know, I have, I understand what they're saying, but I was advised by Town Council to not put the article on the town floor. So I'm very confused as to why they would come back now and say that.
But is it a new position or is it not a new position? Why is that breakdown?
The problem is, is that people are misunderstanding it. The, the Fire Chief appoints positions. They are the appointing authority to the Fire Department. They create the positions that they feel necessary to be on the Fire Department. It has nothing to do with the town. And that is, that is what one of the statutes of the strong chief law is. And that's why it is, so that it avoids the micromanagement.
So the funding source is there, Barry, to answer your question. There'll be money there to fund this position. It's just, the question is being raised at this point in time is, what, the chief provides us with this list of who's on that call list, the Chaplain wasn't listed in there, but is now listed in there. So it's been a change to his document after the town meeting. And I guess that's the argument that's being made. Can we accept that change and pay the person out of that with this new call, call salaries breakdown?
Mr. Chairman, and with your, you know, through you, the, the call salaries breakdown that you're speaking about was, was done by Chief Dolan originally. I had modified it, but he's modified it several times since then between town meetings and it's never been a problem before. So I don't understand why it's coming up now.
So, so I'm not aware of that. So it's been modified as far as changes?
It was created and modified between him and the Select Board well past the town meeting at the time and it was accepted. And it clearly states in the strong chief law that the Fire Department Chief is, is, sets the salaries for all call members, is what it says, and it says with approval of the Select Board. And that's why I brought it here a couple of weeks ago so that the Select Board could review it and could, could look at it. And like I said, I'm not trying, certainly not trying to, to raise any feathers. I'm simply trying to make people understand, you know, because I think there's just been a lot of confusion about what this is. And I think people are thinking this is a much bigger thing than it really is.
If I may, Adam. Nobody is questioning whether or not you have the authority to appoint a chaplain. The question is whether or not it can come out of the 2015 budget.
The 2015 budget?
The next year budget that it would be put in is?
If the board is saying that no one is, if people are saying that there's, that there's no question that I can appoint someone to that position as a strong chief, the omnibus budget that was presented before that says Fire Department salaries. It does not say firefighter salaries. It does not say lieutenants or captain salaries. It says Fire Department salaries. And my job is to, to hire the people that are on the Fire Department. So I don't know why, and I guess I would ask that maybe Town Council review this again because, you know, I don't know why, given what was approved by the town, under Fire Department salaries is the line item for it. Then I don't believe there should be any issue with it whatsoever.
Madeline?
The budget that Adam presented to the, yourself and to the Finance Committee clearly states that is for call personnel.
And he is a call personnel.
And my opinion is that when Town Meeting votes on the budget, it is put in by, it's voted on as disagreement, which the selectmen are aware of, that this is the amount of money that you have to spend. You also have ambulance wages, you have EMT wages, you have your own wages, and you have the EMT stipend. You cannot pay him out of an EMT stipend, you cannot pay him out of ambulance, you can't pay him out of yours. That account has always been for on-call firefighters.
He is on-call.
He is not an on-call firefighter. He's an on-call chaplain.
You just said it was an on-call personnel. He is not.
That's what it says, personnel.
Exactly. It doesn't say firefighter.
And Town Meeting has voted for firemen.
It does, it does not say firefighter.
But in your, this call salaries that you go back and refer to is for on-call firefighters.
And I amended it to say, which is my right to do, that the chaplain?
The two of you should be talking to the board. Neither one of you should be talking to each other. But.
I'm just saying, this is a personal opinion as to what this is.
And if you would?
Go ahead. You want to say something?
He can't say anything.
I absolutely can say something and I will say something. I cannot vote on it. Thank you. The breakdown that was given, was that given at the request of the board to be voted on by the board? Is that voted on by the town or was that a courtesy by the chief?
In my opinion, it was courtesy by the chief. I don't think, I don't recall.
It was a courtesy. I was trying to do it the right way.
All right. I don't recall us voting on this call schedule breakdown.
That was accepted by the previous?
Not on the new one, correct?
Not on the new one.
Correct. But in the past, have we voted on the, on older versions? I don't recall ever doing it in my year.
It was voted on by voters like me to, for that. Yes, it was.
The original was voted on?
By voters like you.
It said personally.
Because it was presented.
I'd have to research that to see when it was done too.
I don't, I don't know the date.
The, all I can say is that this, the paper that I, that I gave to the Select Board clearly says FY's call salaries on top of it. It doesn't say anything about firefighters. It says the people that are appointed by the Fire Chief that are call members of the department. And like I said, I mean, I, I feel that this issue has come up way too much. I feel this is the third meeting that we've had this, you know, that I've been to over this and it's a personal opinion that is unfortunately taking over. I don't mean to create an issue over this, but I don't understand why it keeps coming back to this. And like I said, Town Council has made it quite clear and the precedence has been set across the state of Massachusetts hundreds of times that this has been done. So I don't understand why it's a problem in Warren.
I'm not disagreeing that precedent hasn't been set in previous or other towns, but in my opinion, the town votes for the on-call firefighter, that's all we've ever had and that's what they vote on in town meeting. My opinion, it should go back to the voters to allow it. And since if the Board of Selectmen accept the changes, then they will know from your vote tonight that when they vote on the on-call salaries for fiscal year '17, it will include the chaplain.
Let me ask a question, Barry. You're the Finance Committee Chairperson. Knowing what you've heard now and how we vote on the police salaries and, and such, what would your opinion be on that?
Well, it's a semantic by what I'm hearing. It seems to me that I'm hearing on, I'm hearing firefighter salary versus on-call salary. I, I can't make a justification one way or the other because I don't have paperwork in front of me that says how it's been amended to the current, to today. But it seems to me, we voted for the omnibus budget with the wording firemen, not on-call.
That's not correct.
Police salaries.
It said, it said police salaries.
Fire Department salaries. It says Fire Department salaries. It says nothing about firefighters.
Sorry, that police, excuse me.
It does not say that.
Inexorable salaries.
And so if that's correct, if that's true.
Inexorable salaries.
If, if I would have to, I would say personally that I would agree with Adam if it truly says, if that's some, if that wording is correct, what he's saying, then I would have to say he's right.
The omnibus budget is salaries, Fire Department. The omnibus budget is salaries, fire department. It's not a breakdown of everybody, the state's salaries.
Right.
But the determination has always been, what this call roster has meant, is what's included in there.
Well, but then to go further with it, I hear what Adam is saying and I have to say I agree with him. If he has the right to, as a, as a strong chief, to be able to make the decision on how he uses that salary line, then as long as he's not spending over the budget that he's been voted on, he should be allowed, right, he should be allowed to do that. That's my opinion as a finance person.
With the approval of the selectmen.
Yes, and please, just for the record, through you, Mr. Chairman, Madeline, I'm not trying to create an issue whatsoever through the accountant's office or anything, but I just, again, I understand it's a personal opinion you have, but a personal opinion...
It's not personal opinion.
It's a professional opinion.
It's my professional opinion and I can get...
And I appreciate that. I do. Anybody else want to add anything to this? So, a vote is to be taken regarding, I'm sorry, did you have questions?
No, I feel that Adam should have the right to adjust his salary the way it was voted on it, tell him he, yes, I do have an opinion. I feel that Adam was given a number and he should work within that number. And if he has the right to hire people under his rule as a strong chief, then he should. And we shouldn't be questioning it. At town meeting, it can be brought up at the next budget meeting, at town meeting.
Correct.
But for now, he should be, have the right to hire who he wants. It should be regardless of what it's called. It's under salary.
He does have the right to hire who he wants. It's a question of which line item it comes out of and whether or not you can change who I don't...
And...
Is it a piece from the memorial that says that we should take it back to the special meeting?
Well, again, I have not seen that letter at all. I have not seen it. No one provided that to me. So, but again, I would just say that the line item that would be taken out of is not EMS, it's not my salary, it's not anybody else's salary.
I'm going by the omnibus budget, what it states there. So, are we prepared to vote regarding, I mean, I'm ready to, is there any further discussion? I think we've had it, we've beat this one enough tonight and over the last month. Are you prepared to vote? Or do you want a table? Do you want to allow Adam to read this email and vote on it next week? Contact council, I think we've had this here, right?
May I read the, may I read the email that I have, that, and read the email that I have from town council? I mean, this is...
What's your date?
Yeah.
This one's from, this will give answers from the town council. Just, Adam, this is from November 2nd, 2015, so...
I believe I have one that was, I have one that was after that. So I have one that, for reasons to that.
So I've already read this into the meeting, if you want to share that with us.
Yep.
Okay.
This was all asked by, at the request of the select board at the time of the meetings for the town coming up because there was issues, people had brought up some issues about this. So this was, several questions were asked of town council regarding this, whether or not the strong chief had to do that. Says, this is coming from the person that sent it. Note that the statute is in question, does not specifically authorize a strong chief to appoint a chaplain. In my opinion, although the statute does not expressly allow for the appointment of a chaplain, such a position could be fairly characterized as an officer, which is what all the other departments in the Commonwealth have done, because they're part of the command structure in assist with whatever the chief needs them to do. Their services are whom are for a legitimate fire department purpose. According to the statute, this would permit such an appointment. This position is supported by the fact that numerous fire departments across the Commonwealth employ a chaplain. It then asks the question, does the appointment of the chaplain constitute the creation of a new position? To the extent the department has never been employed a chaplain, reclassifying one of the 20 firefighter position could be construed from some as a creation. That being said, nothing in the strong chief statute prohibits the chief from appointing officers for a legitimate purpose. And that does not exceed the annual appropriation, and in my opinion, the statute authorizes appointment of a chaplain.
Okay. Okay. Do you have anything else, Mr. Lavash?
Yeah, that whole thing, he just agreed to everything he said on that. That statement he just made, it says he has the right to appoint a chaplain. We agreed to that when we started this whole thing.
And the appropriations, which are technically there. I mean, from the omnibus budget, I think it's there. So, do we need to vote?
We need a motion.
So, I need a motion.
Motion to a one or to...
No, no, the board should consider a motion to approve the call salaries breakdown provided by Chief Lavoy to include...
To include the call chaplain. So that's what the motion is.
And I won't make that motion. I'm with the opinion.
I will make that motion. So, I can make the motion, correct? So I will make the motion, so I will need a second for the motion.
Well, I could second it, but it's...
You could second it and then we could still vote and...
I guess I will also say that I don't expect the gentleman to wait around to another town meeting, so I mean, at this point, I just...
No, he's going to appoint it. We're not, we're not...
I can't pay him, so I can't appoint someone that I'm not going to allow.
You can pay him by the end of the year, whatever, when the term gets banned.
I was told that if I submitted a bill, I was told, or I was told by certain people that that gentleman would not receive payment because of this issue at the end of the fiscal year.
But that's where I had stated at the beginning, we could bring it to a special to change it, but right now, we're trying to decide whether or not we just want to approve this tonight. So there's two avenues. The motion's been made to approve it as, as the call schedule, excuse me, call schedule as written with call chaplain included by the fire chief.
I'll second it.
So motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
It's a vote, 2-0 with one abstention. Thank you. Discussion used the mob municipal office building, Jim. Vote expected. So, we had discussion about this last week regarding that. I know the gentleman's not here, president tonight.
Right, he's actually a practice.
So, I guess one of, I'll take it to start. One of the only questions I had, I don't know if Lorna got a response, and is from Maya regarding the liability of the use of the building when it's physically closed.
I did, I did seek a response from Maya specifically to the liability issues of having individuals in the building when the building is technically considered closed for operations, but I have not received a response.
I had spoken with Principal Duff and the way it's handled for the rec leagues, they get a key.
Correct. But they always, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but they always have a custodian in the building. So they can get a key...
They are responsible for cleanup afterwards. If there is an issue...
No custodian present.
There's no custodian present at the high school. There has to be a custodian present unless it's Shep, because Shep works there and he makes sure that it's taken care of. But there's no custodian here at night.
Correct. But I would feel much more comfortable knowing what our insurance company has decided regarding that. Either the chaplain runs through here in the dark, goes running down the hallway and gets in an accident and breaks a leg, are we going to be sued? Because the building's technically closed on Friday. So personally, myself, I'm not prepared to vote until I know from Maya where our liability is. And we're waiting for that.
I'm good with that.
How about yourself, sir?
It's not going to matter. He said, well, he has, I'm going to vote no. So you're not going to vote?
Still going to be you.
We're going to wait.
I think we're going to end up having a table, so we get this answer from Maya. All right, Lorna?
Mr. Lavash, why are you going to vote no? Can I ask you that question?
You, okay, you can ask a question.
Why are we going to vote no?
No, why were you going to vote no?
Because I don't think we should be opening on Friday. The building's been closed, the heat's shut down, the lights are shut down. Those are the most expensive lights in the building. Those are the ginormous lights that take forever to turn on.
So this was for recreational purposes for the kids? For one more team or what was it?
Basketball. One of the leagues is requiring more practice time because we have so many leagues and they can't use the high school and the elementary is limited, so they're looking for a little more time to practice on Friday.
Do you have it in your budget to turn that facility on for Friday night or Friday?
I don't know that yet. I mean...
I mean frankly, you know, can you...
We shut it down to save money. Why are we going to open it now?
Well...
I understand your argument.
If it's in the budget and you can do it...
I personally, Barry, myself, I don't really have an issue with it, but I have a little concern about the liability.
Yeah.
When I coached, I had kids in here and my girls would run down the hallways and I'd be screaming at them to stop that and, you know, so I do worry about that. That's a big concern.
The W is cold and being shut down, so if they turn the heat on, it's going to be working itself to death trying to catch up to the building. It's just, it's going to cost a lot of money.
So, we're going to put it down next week. We'll get an answer from Maya and we can think about that. And I apologize if we have to wait two weeks, but I want that response before we make a motion to take a vote.
Oh, would that be...
Formula Graham, vote expected from the council and agent, which came in from Chair Melli.
Right.
And that's just for the chair of the board to vote?
Just the chair.
Make a motion to, to sign the bond on that.
I will second that. Motion's made, seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that grant is for $8,172.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve payroll warrant 91 in the amount of $35,192.52 and vendor warrant 93 in the amount of $52,088.16 dated January 4th, 2016.
I'll second it. Motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.